Good evening, everybody. Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of scrutiny. The time is 6:30pm on Thursday, the 3rd of March 2022. For those listening and watching, my name's councillor Caroline Brook and I'm chair of this committee. I have a few housekeeping points to make before we begin. Please can I advise that the open parts of this meeting are being audio and livestreamed on the council's website. In addition, a video recording will be made publicly available shortly afterwards. For those in the room, can I ask you to speak clearly? Remember to use your microphones. And for those online, can I ask that you mute your microphones, please? Unless, and turn your camera off unless we call you to speak. Please can everyone ensure that mobile phones are on electronic devices or are silent or switched off entirely? And for those in the room, in the unlikely event of a fire alarm, the alarm will sound and please follow instructions given to you by staff of fire marshals towards the fire access that are clearly marked. And then we'll assemble in Abbey Gardens. Please do not use the lift. Can I welcome the members of the public to this meeting this evening? We've got Martin Wilson and Rose Burns, so thank you, welcome to both of you. And when we get to public participation on the agenda in a few minutes, I'm going to ask you if you'd like to come forward during that section. Because I understand you're both here to speak on the River Park. The first item on the agenda will take approximately an hour. So it's up to you whether you'd like to speak in public participation or speak at the time. So whether it's entirely up to you, what would you prefer? Public participation?
Yes.
And we'll take down the points and pick those up during the River Park discussion. Okay, thank you both for that. As always, the microphone will be activated by pushing the button on it. And you'll have three minutes to make your contribution. There'll also be a timer to tell you how much time you have remaining throughout. There's an exempt appendix on the agenda tonight. And should members wish to discuss the context of that appendix, we will ask members of the public to leave. And we have another room in the Guildhall if you wish to wait. And then once you've finished the exempt appendix, we'll come back into open session. You're welcome to rejoin us if you wish to. I would also understand if you don't wish to wait. So should that be an issue, welcome to that then. We also have several officers, cabinet members and external partners with us this evening. So I'd like to welcome Chief Inspector John Turton this evening. Welcome as always to our annual meeting. And he's here with us to discuss community safety. And thank you for accommodating our change in meeting dates, very much appreciated. We also have some external guests for the River Park item. But I'll ask Mrs Aide when we get to the item to introduce them at the time. So turning to the agenda, we have Sandra Tudner in the room with us for our first agenda item of main business. But before that, Martin, do we have any apologies this evening?
Good evening Chair, thank you. No apologies and all members of the committee present.
Fabulous, thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? No? Okay, so chairperson's announcements. The first item is we don't have a vice chair any longer because we've reshuffled the members. So councillor Hugh Longley is no longer on this, yeah, participating in this committee. So can I ask for a nomination for him to be vice chair, please? Councillor. Councillor Zucco, please. Thank you, I'm happy to second that. Do we have any other nominations? No? Councillor, if you'd like to join me at the front, welcome and thank you very much.
Thank you, I shall do so, thank you.
So secondly, the committee will recall that we initiated a piece of work regarding mental health support and provision. I chaired the first workshop two weeks ago of the task and finish group. And we agreed to terms of reference and then discussed the first topic on the agenda, which was mental health provision for council staff with officers Jamie Cairn, Head of HRT and Lisa Kirkman. The session was really insightful and throughout I found myself just amazed at the amount of thought they put into how best to support the staff. Even the fun things, you know, the weekly photos that I understand that you contribute to that, Mr Beattie?
What did I do?
You know, just some sort of fun things to keep staff members involved, making sure that they checked in on those working at home, ensuring some of the, that the majority of the management had had training and having mental health conversations. The mental health first aiders were always on hand. And they also got supervision to support the mental health first aiders as well. The things that they'd put in place, I was absolutely blown away. And if I looked at it from the place where I am in the NHS, where also, you know, we could have really done with a lot of mental health support, it just left me feeling like where I was working was severely lacking, Harrison. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to Mrs Kirkman, Jamie Cairn, the rest of the team involved in that. Because I was really, really pleased with everything that's been put in. And the staff should be really grateful, so well done to you. And there are two more workshops coming up. One will be on how we support our housing tenants with mental health. And one will be how we support the wider community. So we'll also report those back to the committee at the time. Before we come on to the minutes of item four, I just wanted to say that while we're in this room this evening talking about our particular community safety, there are people in the Ukraine who are really struggling with community safety, quite clearly. And the horrendous actions that are happening over there. So I just wanted to say on behalf of this committee, my heartfelt sympathy and support for them in all this going on. So item four, minutes of the meeting of the 15th of February 2022. Unfortunately, these minutes aren't ready for circulation to us this evening. So we'll carry it forward to the next committee if that's okay with everybody. And now onto item five, public participation. So Mr Wilson, if I could ask you to come forward? Oh, apology, councillor, but. I'm sorry, I thought we had the minutes for 15th of February to agree. We agreed those? They're not? Oh, sorry, yeah, I. We just said we're carrying forward, I just said that they're not. No problem, it's all. Thank you, Mr Wilson, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Chair, committee. At the last scrutiny committee meeting, I spoke to you about the many legal challenges and judicial review proceedings faced by the council in recent years. And the fact that there appears to be no acknowledgement of mistakes made and only a determination by the administration to press ahead with their proposals for River Park with scant regard to civil responsibility, democratic accountability and lawfulness. It seems sadly that what I said fell on deaf ears and that nothing has diverted the cabinet from their intentions. Not hundreds of objections from residents, not the Friends of River Park's carefully drafted letter of objection, not the fact that the public should have been offered the opportunity to provide their views about uses for this publicly owned land in advance of a fully worked up plan, rather than being invited to object to a decision after the event, nor the fact that this is a really terrible deal for the residents of Winchester. I asked you at the last meeting to demand of the administration that a different course is taken from now on, ensuring that decisions are taken which are based on effective communication with residents and thus invite consensus rather than confrontation. I also suggested that your committee should recommend to cabinet that they should call a halt to River Park proposals for a proper public consultation to be held. I reminded you at the last meeting of the important function performed by your committee in scrutinising the council's decision and proposed actions. I go further tonight and remind you of your role under Article 7 of the council's constitution. A, you will hold the cabinet to account by reviewing and scrutinising executive decisions. B, you review and scrutinise the performance of the council in relation to its policy objectives and performance targets. And C, you may exercise the right to call in for reconsideration of decisions made but not yet implemented by the leader, the cabinet and portfolio holders and officers. In regard to calling, I would urge you to regard this decision as too important to be taken with such haste, given its likely impact on the council's budgetary and policy framework and the implications for the whole of Winchester being so grave. Surely a full report to the council, a report to full council by scrutiny committee is required. Please would you hear what I'm saying tonight and act on it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Wilson, appreciate your time this evening. Mrs Burns, would you like to come forward and join us?
Thank you, Chair. It's not just the legality of this proposal that causes residents' concern. It's the principle that where publicly owned land is concerned, intended for and used for the benefit of the public and for their recreational purposes, the public should be consulted about what happens to it. In a decision like this, which will have, as Martin says, such a major impact on our tiny city, when there's a statutory requirement for public consultation, why on earth isn't it being offered to us? There were opportunities in 2018 when I had an embryonic IPG looking at River Park and we had the tents on the reg, we were prohibited from discussing it. Again, in 2020, with a walk around the park and the consultants, no discussion about what would happen to this site was permitted. Friends of River Park was formed in order to protect the public interest in this site and the recreation ground of which it forms part. We took no pleasure in firing off a pre-action protocol letter warning the cabinet of the unlawfulness of its decision on the 4th of December. Indeed, it cost us a hefty amount of money. Councillor Larney thanked us for reminding you of the error which some have called it. But despite the false start and despite the weight of public opinion, the council is plowing ahead with exactly the same decision. Let me remind you that this council is treating the land as landowner. We say that ignores the statutory trust in which the land is held for the public. As well as the fact that it is statfully designated as open space. And I noticed that some officers have said that the leisure centre site doesn't constitute open space. That may be a proof to be debated. But also, and importantly, the government protecting the purpose for which the land was originally purchased. Our objection, which includes some case law you have as appendix G to the report considering we haven't had the cursory response, it's clear that many of our points have been ignored in the schedule of the appendix H. Indeed, of the 428 objections from the public, the only objection which seems to have scored some form of it with you is the bizarre leaseback arrangement proposed for the scape park. I warned councillors by email and cabinet at the 4th of December meeting that the legality of the proposal would be called into question. I reminded you all of CAB3190, that's councillor Larney's own paper in 2019, which contains a summary of the relevant legal framework. It seems that it's being ignored. And I haven't got time to remind you again, but I urge you to call in this decision to full council that we should press the pause button and to which residents have had a chance to talk with their views.
Thank you very much, your time this evening, coming on to speak to us, really appreciated. You are of course both more than welcome to stay through this first section and await the debate on River Park or go and return or just go, it's entirely up to you. So I'll offer you that option. Rose, can I ask you to turn off the microphone, please? Thank you. Thank you to both of you this evening. I will ask Mrs Aide to respond to your contribution with her introduction later on. I believe that she's heard your objections and will address those later on, so thank you for that. So without further ado, we'll come to the community safety report. Councillor Cleare, I believe you're introducing this this evening, so if you'd like to come forward. And as previously mentioned, we have Sandra Tudner in the room and Chief Inspector John Turton. So thank you for coming along this evening. Over to you, councillor Cleare.
Thank you so much, Chair, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This report is an annual review of the Community Safety Partnership activity over the first three quarters 2021-22. In addition, members will note that there are also service updates from officers within the council whose core business also delivers against the council's statutory duty related to crime and disorder. For the purpose of scrutiny, it is important to note that the Police District Commander's update refers to data in 2019, pre-pandemic, in order to provide a more realistic picture of crime comparisons. The partnership recognises the value of joined up working to the benefit of many, enabling collective responsibility and to problem solve together at a local level to improve the quality of life for our residents. Our Community Safety Partnership aims to reduce some of the main causal factors that increase risks related to crime and disorder. And the CSP aims to work across the district with both the voluntary sector and the statutory partners to deliver on its objectives. So I'm pleased to say that Chief Inspector John Turton will provide a brief update on the current crime situation and respond to any questions about his paper, Appendix 2. And in addition, Sandra Tudner will respond to any questions in relation to the report and other appendices as required. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I would like to ask Sandra to say a few words about the report. And then John will provide an overview of the current crime picture, if that's okay with you.
Thank you, councillor Cleare. Thank you then, Sandra.
Thank you. We've been coming here at least once a year for quite a few years now. So I thought this year we'd try and zoom up the report a little bit more and make it a bit more reader friendly. And you'll see that we've added some quick reference bullet points and data headlines on pages 18 and 19. We always try and accommodate any recommendation in terms of the data delivery. So if members have got ideas about what they would like to see or how they'd like us to deliver the data in a report, please feel free to contact me. There are a couple of things I'd just like to say about the report. The appendices have been provided to add context to the data in the main body of the report. And there were a couple of things I just want to draw to your attention. Within the report, it states that the fly tip camera pilot had yet to have a hit where evidence was collected. And I'm pleased to say that recently we've been told that evidence has been found where one of the cameras are. And we are going through the process at the moment of taking that investigation further. So watch the space. Keeping on the theme of fly tip, I just wanted to assure the panel members that the team have always taken a robust approach to delivering an enforcement package. But that doesn't always mean prosecution, as you will see in the updates within the report. There are many hoops to get through before it gets to that stage. And the investigation can be a long and protracted process. As I've said before, it really is important to keep sending out the message that any tampering removal of evidence at sites can impact on the overall outcomes for the flight of prosecution. When it comes to private landowners, wherever possible, we try and recoup costs on behalf of the landowner. And if there is sufficient evidence to prosecute, we don't have, if there is, sorry, if there is sufficient evidence to prosecute, we're trying to recoup their costs. Am I referring to you to begin? A little bit. I think it's because I've got such a loud voice. So back to the private landowners. So we will try and recoup their costs on their behalf. But we don't have any control over when or whether they remove their waste. So I think sometimes there's a bit of a misconception with private landowners or the general public, where they see rubbish or flies upon private land, they assume that we're not dealing with it, where in fact it is down to the landowner to arrange for that removal. And finally, community engagement. There is a reference to a proposal to recruit two additional officers to the local services team within the report. And I'm pleased to say that we presented a report to the business of the housing policy committee on Tuesday this week. And the committee were very much in favour, in support of the engagement of those posts. We are still in the development stage at the moment, so we'd welcome any ideas.
It's okay, the cabinet will resume. But it's okay on Tuesday. Is that nice? Okay. Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay, I'm getting to the end. So if members, if members would like to send any ideas about what they see with youth engagement law has been, then I'd welcome their views. Thank you, and sorry you got so interrupted. If there is an issue on that side of the room and it's interference from the phones or something and it doesn't say to each other, can we ask that you both perhaps move to the end where it was spoken earlier? Thank you, over to you then, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, good evening, everyone. Hopefully you'll have had time to read through the pack. And there's lots of stats in there and you'll hopefully see my report as well. So what I'll do is just summarise some of the issues in there and then gladly take any questions at the end. And start by saying that I can't believe that years gone by since the last scrutiny panel, I had to check my diary actually to confirm that it was on the 11th of March when I was sitting in my spare room and the laptop was balanced precariously on my lap. But who'd have thought that we'd sort of been here and that our crime stats would be affected by Covid? But yes, we are. And it's difficult for us to use the information to use accurate comparisons. But we have compared some of our stats with 2020. But I hope you understand that 2019 gives us a reflection with some of the more kind of normal data outside the pandemic. Hopefully the next, what next period, we're looking forward to the next performance period and hopefully there's some more better comparisons there. I'm really proud actually that despite the pandemic, my team still have delivered on the frontline wearing BPE to minimise the infection. Some of the teams have been working from home. And it's surprising actually how efficiently we move forward with some of the IT and some of the technology. And slowly, some of them are coming back into the workplace now. I think it's worth pointing out too that although organisationally it's been difficult, partnership has been, I wouldn't say difficult, it's been different. But nevertheless, it would be really, really strong, really, really well connected. And actually, even though some of it's been virtual, it just kind of feels like business as usual now. And I think we've really gone from strength to strength. It isn't surprising to see that overall crime increased from this period to last period. But actually, if you look at the crime stats back in 2019, you see they were actually nearly 7% under that, so I take some comfort from that. Sexual offence is something that troubled me when I reflect on some of the stats because you'll have noticed that they have increased. And some of those are non-recent offences. And some of them are when victims have practised in council environments and reported historic incidents and multiple reports. But there are some as well that have taken place in our night time economy environment. So it's only right that we look at opportunities to maximise on our victims, the locations and also the offenders. And also, it's really important that we look forward on how we can take forward some of the violence against women and girls initiatives. And we've got some really good work that gets on going and will be moving forward in that respect. So we had a review, an internal review across the Hampshire Police and Area to look at how we respond to domestic abuse. It's probably fair to say that there's learning opportunities from my district. It was one of the districts that was inspected first. And as a response to that, we developed some improvement areas, a really sharp action plan for the areas that were outlined. And I'm really pleased as well to say that our second review that went through the same kind of methodology. And it was a really, really deep dive, that we've made some massive improvements. And actually, we're kind of leading the force in a lot of these areas, which is really good. Briefly talk about the partnership approach and some of the antisocial behaviour in the city. We've got a really different approach to that in terms of looking at some of the troubled individuals that have committed some of the offences. But also looking at some of the environmental opportunities as well. It's good to see that the plans for the additional CCTV expansion has just started to land as well. So it's great to see that in place. So our officer uplift is starting to land. It still presents some challenges for us because there are people leaving as we've got people joining. And the new way that police recruited with the police degree means that we have to give them protected learning as well. So there's quite an abstraction in that respect. But as soon as they come through the system, I'll be really pleased to see those numbers realised. One of the really, really good bits of work that I wanted to talk about tonight was Operation Barnacle. This was a horrendous organised crime group that were responsible, just in our district, were committing over 20 burglaries. They were high volume burglaries, they were looking at cash, jewellery, vehicles. And they were really organised, really forensically aware and actually not deterred when, when house owners were in the property as well. There's some quite horrendous offences. But I'm really pleased that we were able to investigate them, to detain the perpetrators. They're all in prison now and I'm so pleased I can see that reflected in the crime stats. There's a lot, a lot fewer victims of burglary at the moment. One of the good, good bits of news as well is that we've got an extra sergeant post on district. This gave me the opportunity to build a high-harm team, or a proactive team, as I like to call it, because we don't just focus on high harm. They're focusing on domestic abuse, they're focusing on some of the impact of county lines that we see in the city. They're also looking at serious crime and they are deployed in different kind of tactics. So sometimes they'll be covert in plain clothes, but other times you'll see them overt as well, dealing with stuff that comes in either spontaneously or pre-planned. And I'll just go to the control charts that just give you a snapshot of where we are in terms of our performance. So you'll see from, as we've moved out of Covid on the Winchester all crime control chart, that crime has started to rise, but it's, it's been a steady rise. And like I say, it's a similar place to where we were in 2019. Formal actions taken, that's summoners, that's charges, that's cautions and community resolutions. And you see that that steadily tries to start to pick up as well. Antisocial behaviour across the district has dropped, which is good news. And then if you look at the detailed sort of breakdown, that gives you the detail in terms of the current period, year to date, in reflection to where we were in the last period. Probably the easiest chart to read, the most accurate, is where the numbers are. So if you look at the variance chart there, there's some really good news, but also there's some issues that we need to focus on. So I've always already talked about the sexual offences that are in there. Really good news stories, the amount of theft-related offences that have been reduced. So that's like a whopping 851 crimes, 851 less victims to crime, which is great. And that's volume crimes, that's burglary, that's theft on motor vehicle, that also includes retail crime too. You'll see as well that there's a real spike in criminal damage, so that's up 57 offences. That actually amounts to a spree where we had a gang that went round one evening in a vehicle with a slingshot and four veterans. They caused damage to vehicles, to dwelling. They caused damage to vehicles, to dwellings, and other sort of properties. That's a one night of criminal damage. And I'm pleased to say that's not being repeated. And the other figure that shines out for me are the public order offences. So that's gone up 135. That actually relates to a criminal behaviour order that we've got for a chap that can't stop himself, phoning 999 and reporting nonsensical stuff. We've actually got criminal behaviour that stops him or that causes it to be an offence for him to make those calls. And so they're now their crime is public order, which accounts for that spike. And we're dealing with those and solving those as well. So that's what I really wanted to say in my summary tonight. I'm really happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. And thank you for producing all this information for us. It's really useful. So does anybody have any questions for John or Sandra? Councilor Power?
Thank you, John. I have two questions, actually. I'm very concerned about the headcount only going up by 410 despite there being 700 new officers. And the ability that gives you to train them effectively and create them fully formed and safe for themselves and for us. And indeed, that must impact operational effectiveness. What help can we give you to help you retain officers in the first place and then to ensure that operational effectiveness is maintained?
I don't think, actually, thanks very much. Good question. I don't think, I would like to be able to say there is something, but I don't actually think there is. It's been a challenge actually. And our chief's been really clear that there's an opportunity to get the maximum amount of police officers in through the door in a really, really short time. So it's been a real challenge for our training department. It's been a challenge for our estates because, you know, you remember when we went through austerity, we had to reduce our micro-vehicle fleet, our amount of accommodation. So it's been a challenge all around. But the recruiting's generally getting it right, getting some good people through the door. We've got a very, very different training package that's really changed the way that police are coming in. So we're learning as we're going along. And we're actually finding what a challenger it is for some of the new recruits to balance their learning actually at coalface when they've actually got to do their academic stuff as well. That's a real challenge. But I don't honestly think, Councilor Power, there's a lot you can do to help with that. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Inspector. And could you give me a view as to what proportion of the workload arises from mental health issues?
I actually can't give you a view of how much. Without a doubt, some of the most vulnerable people that we deal with, 100%, some of that will be mental health. But we know as well, that, you know, Sandra will agree with this, that sometimes there's a real conflict in trying to get those mental health issues assessed and addressed when often they're masked with substance dependencies as well. So that's a real challenge for us.
Thank you for that. And councillor Carmichael?
Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair. So I'm a relative newbie to the scrutiny committee. So every time we do something, it's brand new to me. So it's always very interesting. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions which may reflect that newness to it, but I'm about to try and understand better what's going on here. So on page 14, where we talk about the use of cameras to monitor hotspot for fly tipping, I'm just wondering what the cost benefit analysis is there. So in simple terms, what's the cost of putting up the camera and managing the camera versus the cost of, you know, dealing with fly tipping? So that's the first question. Second question is on the headline data in the area of the fraud, which seems to be up a lot. And I'm just wondering what the nature of that is. And is it reflecting a different type of fraud that has occurred since we've gone through lockdown? So, you know, maybe all frauds are equal. And underlying that data, there's different types of fraud. And then the last question is on the chart. And thank you very much for putting some charts together. I love charts, much more than I love seeing your data. So on that particular chart, figure two, the domestic abuse, I'm just to understand what the metric is on the left-hand side. Because at a very simplistic visual level, if I look at the bar charts for Winchester, it's only a little bit lower than the lines for Hampshire. And I'm sure Winchester's, in fact, I think your numbers say that Winchester's about 70% of the total for Hampshire. So just to understand what the metric is there and whether it's the same metric for Hampshire and for Winchester. So that's it. Hope that's not too mumbled.
Which one of you would like to respond personally? I'll try. I'll move if it starts. If you don't mind, I'll move because it's really... Is that better? Is that okay? Good. So we supported the CCTV camera pilot. So I'm not actually sure of the total cost of the cameras. We started with three cameras and they've now been, we've now got six. But what I can say, they're very small sort of wildlife type cameras. So I think the cost of those cameras would be far outweighed by the cost of removing the detritus, the flight tip. For instance, if we have anything with asbestos, that area has to be sealed off. We have to get specialist officers in to remove it. And also, of course, the impact it has on the environment itself. And that would include the wildlife, et cetera. So I would say, at the moment, it's only a pilot. But I would say that the cost of those cameras is probably beneficial in terms of the overall cost of removal of waste and the impact on the environment.
Right, thank you. So the fraud one is quite an easy one to answer, actually. Since the pandemic, we've seen an overwhelming sort of rise in internet fraud of a number of kind of things. It moved on from the courier fraud that we saw before that. So that explains the rise in that. And could you just repeat the one about the domestic abuse, please? I'm not there about that.
So it's chart two, figure two. And what I'm looking at is just, you know, the visual impression from the chart is that the grey and blue bars go up sort of almost as high as the red and yellow line. So I'm going to understand the metrics here, i.e. what are we actually measuring? And am I misunderstanding the impression that comes from that chart, which kind of gives me the feeling that Winchester accounts for like 80% of the crime that you're measuring there? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. The way that we understand this chart is that this is just a reflection of domestic abuse. So the blue, so the blue indicator and the grey indicator are indicators of the 2020 and 21 figures. So the blue one's 2021, grey 2020. I think the most important thing to look at are the comparisons with the average. So the lines that are above that give you an indication of where we were in 2020 and where we are in 2021 as a force. So you'll see the force lines in 2020. We were close to where we are at the force. But actually, in 2021, we're much lower than the force average.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand. Have I got that question?
I think it's a per capita. I think the Hampshire figures are actually a per capita adjustment for Winchester. But your chart?
Yeah. Yeah, these are from the, yeah, these are not ones that I produced. So this is what I, this is for the O P C C, I think, is it?
You can point to it, Chair. Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, we'll check that and feed that out. Thank you for your question. Councillor Goodfree?
Thank you, Angela. Got one question, Chief Inspector, and a series of questions for Miss Talbot. So certainly, net increase of 410 officers is certainly very welcome. But when they're fully trained up and with the, there is still a net gain of 410 officers across the year, et cetera. What will this look like for residents of my ward? Will we start seeing more speed control and more emphasis on rural crime? A bit more success on drug-related crimes? Dare I say, have some more beat surgeries? Is that possible?
Yeah, thanks for that. Well, the way that we operate is intelligence-led. So it depends, you know, what the issues are, what our crime rates tell us, what our intelligence has told us. That's absolutely where we're going to put in our police officers. With the uplift, it gives the opportunity to do more. You know, I think we need to, in terms of beat surgeries, I'm really, really, my aspiration is to use technology a little bit more for that. You know, I don't think it's the best use of our time to be, you know, helping beat surgeries and, you know, just a couple of people turning up. But I think there's more that we can do in that kind of digital space. And that digital engagement is something that I want to do. But in terms of the, you know, whether it's a speeding priority, the areas that we're always going to look at when we're looking at speed are those areas that are the sites where tragic people lose their lives or get seriously injured. So that's where they're going to be. But, you know, one of the things I mentioned at the end of my update was the proactive team that I've been able to build with the kind of uplift of the establishment in Winchester. So just getting an extra sergeant's post has been able to enable me to look at the distribution of some of our staff, some of those kind of skill sets. And they're doing some really, really good work. But they are the team that, they carry a really, really small caseload. And there's no apology for that. That's just so that they're not in the police station dealing with their files. They can respond to stuff spontaneously and be proactive. And the other teams are picking some of that workload. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Moving on to the section 11.7 on fly tipping. I'm interested as, in relation to this last period, there's 1349 reports of fly tipping, which join 17 site visits per year. Could, Miss Talbot, tell us what, how that compares with the same period in previous year or comparable to the year? And what's the criteria for visiting a site when there's a report?
So the criteria for visiting a site would be if a report comes in where it's clearly white lips, a switch freezer or a washing machine, something like that. And there are no other black bean liners or other bags around it, we would probably just ask for a remove of that fly tip. Wherever there is any black bean liners, bags, household goods within a fly tip, we would always send an officer out.
And stats would keep them there in comparison?
I'll be hacky because I've got stats against the 2020. What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page 14, page 11.7.
Yeah. Within the appendix, I think you're finding you just say the appendix one in this. There are some more details about the fly tip. So page 25? Sorry, 25? 30? Yes, 25. So you'll profit first, Councilor Power, of data.
Right.
Did you want to ask your next question, Stephen?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We can pick that up afterwards. That's fine. We can produce that for the committee.
Well, as I said, it depends on what we're hunting once of the stats. But I know that there were eight prosecutions either in progress or pending for the previous period. And there seem to be eight prosecutions for the most recent period, that might still be possible. Out of 1349 incidents and 217 visits, site visits, that doesn't seem a very high number. I was hoping to understand what the trend was in fly tipping reports. Why isn't that number increasing in line with the reports? And what more can be done to take more people to prosecution?
I think, as I said in our introduction, although we might receive a number of fly tip reports, it's quite rare for us to actually find enough evidence for us to actually take it forward, whether it's for prosecution or any other type of enforcement. So I think, and also, some of the cases are quite protracted. So they might start in 2020, but they might not get to court until about 2021. So sometimes the rollover of figures is that they are, they're still ongoing, not as investigations waiting for court dates.
Can we have the prepared figures?
Yes, certainly.
Yeah, I'll ask them to be sent out with the minutes, if that's okay. Can I just ask a point of clarification following off of councillor Goodfree's question? Are the number of reports that you've got of fly tipping, some of them are multiple reports of the same fly tip? Or are they individual instances of fly tipping?
No, these are the individual ones. But there are duplications across different services. So you have to bear that in mind as well.
Thank you, Sandra. Did you have any other questions, councillor Goodfree?
Far too many, far too many.
Councillor Ferguson? Thank you, Chair. I have one for John Tutton and so on for Sandra. You'd like to go first? Oh, John, thank you. I just wanted, thank you for the report. There's an awful lot of detail in there. I'm horrified to see the increase in the sexual offences crimes for obvious reasons. But my question relates to the pandemic and its effect on the statistics. So to what extent do you feel that the changes in the statistics that we see over this time period are related to the pandemic? So that rise in sexual offences, antisocial behaviour, and that decrease in theft. And to what extent do you expect those trends to continue? Or do you think things will change back? Now, in theory, some things get back to normal to where we were before. And from that, what actions are we taking to prepare or to mitigate that change? Thank you.
It's a really difficult question. And some of it is due to the kind of supposition. I think that some of the crime types, you can actually look at as control charts that are there. And you can look at the kind of peaks and troughs. And you can absolutely see that that was due to the pandemic. You know, when we were properly locked down and everything was rock bottom, you could only go out and exercise once a day. You know, it's difficult to kind of commit crime. People were, it was easier for us to spot people that were out and about for no good. Some of them, like some of the antisocial behaviour, you remember that when we were in the pandemic, it was beautiful weather, limited opportunities to socialise, there was no pubs open. It was, you know, it was, it changed, it changed people's habits massively. We're not used to seeing the amount of open-air drinking. So places like Compton Lox and the Cathedral of Guards, you remember that people were drinking. So antisocial behaviour spiked in relation to that and getting lots of reports. But since that started and there's more of an offer and things have started to return to normality, you'll see that the antisocial behaviour's dropped in line with that. So that's one example of absolutely that's pandemic-related. Some of the theft issues, when they were low, that was helped by pandemic. But you see that when it's picked up again, when we've moved out of the restrictions, that's clearly an indicator of that. But I can tell you as well that some of the crime that we've been dealing with more recently has been some officer defendants. So they've been literally committing lots and lots of crimes. And one example is theft on motor vehicle. One example is theft of motor vehicles. So it's common for people to leave their cars unlocked. It's common for some of our criminals to look at that as an easy target, to take parking money, to take, you know, sunglasses, electric items, things that they can turn around and get money for really quickly without running the risk of being detected. So we've just arrested, I say just, two months ago, we arrested two of our most persistent offenders for that. And then we linked to a third group offence as well. So they're in prison. And I can show you absolutely where the crime was going up when they're out and about committing those offences. And I can show you that it's plummeted now. So that's actually an indication of where we've done something. There's been an action and a reaction for it, and that's not pandemic-wise.
And just to supplementally on that, Frau Sondre, your question. The sexual offences particularly, do you think that's got any, that rise, it's got any relation to the pandemic? Or do you think that's separate, that's a general rise, you're saying?
To recent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to answer that actually when I talked about the figures. So a little bit of both, actually, because the sexual offences that have gone up, some of them are non-recent, so they're, you know, we used to call it, say, historic. But the non-recent offences, so that they, some of them have been reported that happened many years ago. There is, there is evidence to say that some people, whilst they've been in lockdown, have had that, that opportunity to, to access some of the services and support services have come forward to report some of those things. So we're now investigating those. And when that happens, sometimes they are multiple offences. So it won't have just happened on one occasion. It will have happened, you know, given, sometimes it's childhood stuff as well. And they will say that it's happened between a number of years. But when they can tell us how many offences, they'll be crimes differently. The ones that have happened that relate to our night time economy, there certainly is an indication that we, you know, we've got two years where we've had that suppression of people between kind of 18 and 20 that have not been able to go out, not been able to access that night time economy, not been used to drinking in pubs. And we can see as well that there's, you know, even the street pastors have noticed that people are getting themselves to some stages where they're more vulnerable. They've not accessed the drinking kind of culture within a peer group and a support group. They've just literally gone into it, preloaded sometimes before they start the evening into some of the venues and drinking more, drinking strong stuff. But we're really, really linked up so closely with the street pastors, with CCTV, with pub watch, some fantastic work with the university that we're doing. There's all sorts of stuff that's going on. So I do feel that we are really, really aware of all the kind of issues that are going on. And we've actually got some stuff in place to try and protect some of those people, try and prevent them from becoming vulnerable. But also as well, looking at perpetrators as well. When we do identify that we've got perpetrators, we make no apologies of going towards those to target them really, really robustly as well.
I think it's also important to add that sometimes if you've got a high-profile case through social media, that also encourages other people to come forward and report stuff, sexual offences as well.
And we've done some stuff at school as well. So we've done some educational stuff in some of the schools, which has made people think about what's been going on and realise that's offences as well. So we have a lot of reporting from that sort of area, which is, which is good, you know. You look at some of the stats and think that it's bad that the rate's gone up. It doesn't make a good reading, but actually, that trust and confidence that people are coming forward and telling us what's happened, giving us that opportunity to investigate is good as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your answer. It's just horrifying to think that it was going on before, we just weren't aware of it. And Sandra, I hope my question's easier and quicker than it for you. With the neighbourhood officers, I'm really delighted to be getting to you all. I've had questions within my ward, I cover one of, which is part of my ward. And I've had several questions from residents and from the Chair of the World Forum, who've said previously, we knew who our neighbourhood warden was. They were a named person for our area. And now we don't have a named person, you know, team, and we just access another team. And I wondered if you clarified whether or not that has changed and why it's changed? And from a resident's point of view, whether they're consulted on that change? Because at the moment, they don't perceive that as a beneficial change. Thank you.
The neighbourhood services team were previously neighbourhood wardens. They were a small team and largely a contribution from the town forum. So they were largely in the town forum area. So therefore, they were allocated to a geographical area. So our high-profile state, right? Since then, in 2020, 1920/2020, the team merged with our housing estates officers and therefore team became bigger. And we are out across the district, but largely on our housing estates. So we do a lot of work around the health and safety checks and working with our general needs and our shared teams. We tend to find that in order for the team to be known to our elected members, it's much better for them to rotate every few months. So every quarter, I rotate the teams, they move to a different area and take responsibility for that area for three months. What's missing or what has been missing is the community engagement side. So, and that's where those two new posts are coming. So they will be responsible for ensuring that we raise the profile of where our officers are going to be. We'll actually share the schedules of what days they're going to be in. We're going to do much more around street briefs or community briefs with our residents and attendants. And to be honest, I think that we are a proactive team. We also are a response team. So we respond to issues of antisocial behaviour, residents. You've already heard that we deliver basically fly tip. We have a statutory duty to deliver against crime and disorder. So our team is all encompassing. But we are only a team of five neighbourhood service officers, one estate improvement officer, an estate contract manager, and myself, and a community safety project officer. So to actually allocate an officer to a geographical area as a patrol officer is not possible anymore. Our role is really changed.
Thank you for that. Councilor Hall?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to John and Sandra for a very comprehensive report. Some really helpful information. Appreciate this hard to make a read in what has been some difficult times in the recent past. And particularly, I just want to say and call out the efforts made by John and his team on the A33, which is mentioned briefly in here. But I can say to you that the residents in our ward were hugely, hugely grateful to all of you when you galvanised additional resources and were able to support that community when they were overrun really by visitors and some very antisocial behaviours. So thank you and thank you for sticking with us as we go forward trying to work through that. I'd like, Chair, if I could, and I think it's probably partly Sandra, partly John, just to clarify, earlier in the week at the Business and Housing Policy Committee, we were talking about patrols in town. And we were talking about additional resources for outreach, outreach which we confirmed. In this paper tonight on page 15, it says that we have applied for additional outreach support. Just to clarify, is that open above what we've already mentioned earlier in the week? I think this is to the PCC office. So this may be incremental, but it would be good just to understand what additional resources we might be able to receive. If you could clarify that, that would be helpful. Also, on page 23, it talks about the bid ranges and dealing with 584 ASB-related incidents. And again, are those reported incrementally open above the ASB chart that we have on that same page? So are the bid incidents rolled in with ours or are they recorded separately? And around ASB as well, there's been a lot of talk about the antisocial behaviour in King's Walk and some rationale for changing some of the infrastructure there. But we do know that sometimes those individuals just move to another part of town. And so have you got any actions in place or prepared to put in place as we try and improve King's Walk? And you've obviously got the cameras now as well. But are there other elements where we're trying to support that community so that they don't just move to another spot in the city? Thank you, Chair.
So should I start with the outreach?
Yeah, that's kind of, sort of wrapped into King's Walk, but no, that, that isn't just outreach tonight.
So the district markups are always invited to look at the funding applications going through to the O P C C. And one of the, but obviously our job is to look at what our priorities are at a local level and to support those that we think will help, will be the delivery arm of those priorities. So in terms of the outreach work, this would be additional to what is already being provided. And John's work, it's actually linked back to King's Walk, but in a wider context. So what we were supporting, and we don't know if the bid has been successful or not yet, but what we were supporting was outreach, not just in the early morning. So that we could actually call on those outreach services if we've got an individual that's practically problematic in the city. And I have to say that the majority of our street attached are actually accommodated in some form or another. So what we would do is encourage the outreach team to come out and perhaps persuade that individual that maybe it's time to go back to their accommodation or to move them on to somewhere where they're not going to be themselves in trouble. So we were very supportive of that funding bid and we await it to some level or so.
Yeah, so just, you know, specifically in relation to King's Walk, there's a lot of kind of moving things that just need to kind of get together. But, you know, that process has started and it is starting to move forward as well. Like I said earlier, you've got CCTV in place, which is great. It removes those areas that are not covered, where perhaps people might be more inclined to go into, to do whatever they want to do. But the other things that are going on as well are things like trying to understand and trying to address those environmental factors. So conversations around the wall that's there, you know, what can we do to change that, to make it impossible to see things on? So with, you know, some advanced plans that are going to be addressed so that it's not a popular place for them to, they can't actually physically sit there. So that's something that will happen soonish. We, the process that we started actually is to start looking at those people that cause the most problems, to try and understand what's going on in their life. And it's a little bit like a stick and character, to be quite honest. Because if we can support them, if we can understand why is their behaviour in that way, we can prevent it, and absolutely if we're going to do that, we're going to give them that wraparound, give them that support. But whilst that's going on, we're building an evidence base of what their offending history looks like. Also, putting a layer of what that impact factor looks like for the business community. So we've got a statement that sits on top of that to evidence the disruption, the fear of crime and the impact of that kind of businesses. So that if we've got some of those individuals that are committing offences, and let's be honest, the offences that they do commit are low-level offences. You know, I know they're impacted, but we're talking about drunkenness. We're talking about public court offences. And, you know, if those go to court, you're not looking at like a heavy sort of consequence. But what I want to do is to put those kind of layers together and so that when those offences do come to light, when it is a minor offence, that we're able to articulate to the courts that this is a bigger problem and to try to evidence preventative orders. So look at community criminal behaviour orders that will not just prevent people from being in King's Walk. But, you know, my aspiration would be if they're misbehaving in King's Walk, and there's no reason for them to be in the city, that they'll be removed from the city. And if they just come into the city, then they'd be reaching their CBOs, which is what we've done before. I want to use that a lot more. So that helps with displacement because, you know, if we can't just arrest our way out of this situation, we're just going to move into some of those other familiar sites. So really, really important that we build up that evidence base so that will take us forward. Look at the environmental factors. And also as well, there are businesses that are keen to get into King's Walk. And I firmly believe that once it gets busier, once it gets more vibrant, they'll be less inclined to gather there, I think.
I think it's also important to add that we've really invigorated what used to be the tactical group, where we, it's linked to the antisocial behaviour panel. So they might come through the antisocial behaviour panel in the first instance. So we can look at what support mechanisms need to be put in place. Those that are most prolific, I wouldn't have that on point. Those that are most prolific would then be halfway through to the tactical group, where we look at them as individuals. And we almost try to agree, a bespoke plan of action against that individual or for that individual. So we are, we try to, as always, with criminal justice, anything to do with antisocial behaviour, we will always try to balance between those that will be happy to engage and accept support and those that really do have to go to the enforcement group.
Yeah, I'm really, sorry, just to come in now, I'm really, really keen to focus on what we can do and not what we can't do. But this process, I'm really keen to focus on what we can't do as much because that helps us to understand why we can't do it. And it helps us commission services and find those gaps in services as well. And one of those gaps, we think, is that outreach, you know, great services that are accessible. We've got some wonderful support in the city. But actually, what does that look like when they move away from those projects that are in the city? Is that their outreach for the professionals that can, you know, take them away from criminal justice system? So.
Chair, could I just ask a quick supplementary? So the bid ABS, are they incremental or are the Rangers reporting? Is that separate?
No, it's not. It will be incremental because we work very closely with the bid ranges. And obviously, some of their reports will be duplicated by some of us. So it's incremental.
And the tactical group, did that just sort of slow during Covid then? Because obviously, that was a very big focus before in trying to then manage through some of those individuals. So you just reinvigorated that, I think that helps you, Sam?
Yeah, that's why. Yeah, I think it did slow by, what, almost to zero from the Covid time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Christ?
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions to make. I think one is an extension of a previous question. Am I reverberating or am I okay? And I don't make any apologies for this because, as you said, it's actually important in terms of the sexual offences. We don't, I'd like to say that Winchester is a safe place to be, a safe place to visit, especially for a night time economy, especially as we are trying to grow that night time economy. And headline data doesn't give that story at all. It's useful having the context that you provide in terms of some of it is historical. And to a certain degree, it's great if the numbers are going up. And conversely, if you've actually got information on what crimes that have happened or had happened. Is there any way we could separate them out in terms of current crimes, if you will, vis-à-vis legacy crimes?
Are you talking about offences of violence? Are we talking about specifically sexual offences?
Specifically sexual offences, but I guess we're saying goodbye to both.
Yeah, yeah, they can. And the, it's not drilled down in this data, but my data that I concentrate on for violent crime is very much violence with injury and violence without injury. Violence without injury, post, lots of different crime types. So even some of the public offences are categorized violence without injury. But the violence with injury is something that is really kind of controlled. I just today had a conversation with my licensed officer, who will say that Winchester- who was saying that Winchester is actually bucking the trend with the rest of the force. And night time crime violence is incredibly low, when other areas are seeing it climbing. So I'm really reassured that it's not just my kind of barometer that leads me to believe that, but he's got that lens at force level where we're seeing some of the areas that have got some room challenges at the moment. In terms of the sexual offences, absolutely, that is something that we break down and we look at. I've just given you a summary tonight, but it's looked at in detail so that we can understand the, what's happened with the non recent offences, what's happening with the here and now. Because you know, they're still going to get the same amount of investigation, but they are, we need to understand what opportunities are. You know, where is it that we need to be doing our work to prevent them? Is it the night time economy? Is it our student base? Is it perpetrator's base? You know, that helps us to inform what our activity is.
Yeah, I think if we could have that breakdown, I think that would help us with the story because right now, the story's not good. It's not a good story at all. It's helpful to have the context, but if a member of the public sees this, it's terrible, shocking. So that level of breakdown, as you described, I think would be very powerful. I also noticed you referred to known troubled offenders when you spoke earlier, when you spoke about the night time economy in Winchester town, I guess. Known troubled offenders, could you explain if they're known troubled, that we do anything about those known people?
Yeah, this is not really the night time economy. These, you know, some of our most vulnerable that come from kind of troubled backgrounds that are associated with our street activity. You know, they're incredibly troubled and they are the people that we're looking at for the kind of deep dive into what's going on in their life. Can we support them? Can we engage? Are there any diversion activities? So they're going to get all that support, but whilst they're getting that support, we're going to be actually evidence based and we're going to be building cases so that if they do come to light, there's violations behind them and the next offence that comes to light, we'll be able to go to court, be able to look at civil orders like criminal behaviour orders.
Do I go for a second one, Chair?
Yes, you may.
And so the second one is about vehicle offences. That's had a massive increase, 147%. There's not much else in here in terms of those vehicle offences and what that comprises. Is it drunk driving? Is it speeding? What are the consequences of that? Are there road deaths associated with that? Road safety is increasingly important to residents. I can't tell the story here about what's happening. I get lots of data from speed watch cameras, people know me, like in data, so it's sent me all the data that's coming in. I've got all the, I can tell you that people speed mostly at four o'clock in the morning, people speed going to work early. And people are increasingly, I don't know if this has come down to lockdown, where people got used to quiet roads and they're just noticing the speed now. The people are increasingly demanding that there's adherence to speed limits, increasingly demanding slower speeds. So there's a lot of 20 mile an hour pressure. So what more can we all do in that space? It's very difficult for you to manage traffic offences, particularly at four o'clock in the morning. So what more can we do and particularly what more can be done around 20 mile an hour speed zones where they exist? What enforcement can we do in those areas?
Well, that's a couple of questions there, I think. The first one, we're talking about vehicle crime. That's talking about theft from motor vehicles. And the different sort of crime types we've got in that area are, we've got the vehicles that are left insecure, lots of, that are easy targets for people to take property out of without getting detected. Cat converters, we're still getting stolen, so they'll be in the figures as well. And we're getting loads of number plates stolen as well, you know, for obvious reasons, ghostly vehicles and stuff like that. The main one in that crime group is the theft from motor vehicles that are insecure. And that's where we've had the most impact with the recent arrests. So that gives, that is the, they're the motor vehicle figures that we've got. And since we've had those convictions, we've had a massive reduction in them. And actually, the, one of the things that's coming in, one of the integrated proper management projects is that if some individuals have been in prison for over 12 months and they come out, we can apply for tags, so GM tags. So they will actually be tagged for a period of time when they come out. So then we can overlay crime types and crime areas and we can find out whether those people are in that area and we can attribute them to the crime. So you can either sort of prove or disprove that they're involved in it. So that's something that's really good about vehicle crime. The other thing that we get as well is the beauty spot thefts, which is, tends to be vehicles that are secure. People, you know, people drive up and they'll, before they take a dog for a walk or they go out, they'll put a handbag up in the seat or put it in their boot. And of course, they're being watched and those vehicles will be broken into by force and that will be stolen. So not as many of those, but that is again organised criminality. And we've had some good arrests with that, but that's difficult because we live in, you know, lovely area, lots of beauty spots. So it's difficult to target proactively. The issue about speed is twofold. What you can do to inform our process is report it on the website to the Community Safety, the Camera Safety Unit. And what they will do then is like you say, they'll put these devices out, they'll measure it and that will help to let them understand what the best tactical options are. If it's low speed, what we tend to do is try to get the community speed watchers engaged, send in warning letters out. Sometimes they're really useful and it's active citizenship. So it's not involving police officers and utilising us for that. It's something that the residents can do themselves. In the areas that are more problematic when we're getting higher speeds, you're absolutely right that we have seen tragically more serious injuries and more road deaths since we've kind of moved out of the pandemic. And that's something that the speed vans will be looking at. It's something that road policing are massively focused on, casualty reductions and stuff.
I think if we could have a breakdown of those vehicle offences then, between which ones are kind of broken into and which ones are more police, traffic police, that would help us tell the story.
Yeah, so those vehicle, the stats that you're talking about vehicles, they are theft from motor vehicles. They're vehicle offences, they're not, the road traffic offences are not, don't have that crime type. So they're something totally different.
Got it. Okay, so those kind of issues are not captured in this headline, but?
No, no. So they will be, they will be, these are theft offences, so they're within that crime type. The speeding, the road collisions, they're in the Road Traffic Act. So they'll be considered more by our colleagues in road policing than necessarily by me.
Got it. Okay, very good. Well, thank you for commenting on that.
That's all right. Appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Cook.
Thank you Chair. And I'd like to follow on if I may from councillor Christ's question. And it's a question to the Chief Inspector. Do you have any statistics, okay, regarding how many of those that are charged with sexual crime offences, serious crimes and violent offences? And then to follow on from that, how many of those are actually prosecuted successfully and then convicted?
No, I don't tonight, actually. I know that lots of work's been done with the Crime Prosecution Service in terms of what that threshold looks like to get charges. And I know as well that you mentioned some of the programmes, the documentary programmes that we've actually done with the crime prosecution with our own investigation that deal with sexual offences. And, you know, I can remember really clearly one that went out and there's a officer in the case there that actually had the victim of that offence. And they were talking really openly about what happened. They were talking about the evidence that they've got. And, you know, I would look at that and say all day long, that's got to be a charge, that's got to be a conviction. And, you know, the C P S would say, well actually, it's not enough. And he was saying that the job that he was talking about when it went out on the television programme was the, evidentially, it was the strongest job on his account. He got up 20 more of those jobs. So it's a really, really difficult area because quite often it's one person's word against the other person. There's, you know, seldomly an independent witness, CCTV, you know, sometimes even if it's forensic, there could be reasons why there's forensic evidence there. So it's really, really difficult. But I know that our previous deputy did lots and lots of work with the Crime Prosecution Service, a veteran standard, just getting the best results for our victims.
Can I follow on from that? You say the best results for the victims, but and you refer to your predecessor who's done a great deal of work on this. What more can be done? Because it is very much a topic, isn't it, of how the judicial system works and people are known to have offended. And you, you know, sat there and said, you know, there is a strong case there. And there they are, they walk away. No charge. That is very, very frustrating.
Yeah, and, you know, you, the question might be in the wrong area because, you know, all I can say is that the standard of investigation is a, you know, gold standard. You know, we do everything that we can. Even sometimes when victims don't feel that they want to follow a prosecution route, that's really common. And they perhaps just want to tell us it's really severe domestic abuse as well, but they want to call us, they want to report it. Sometimes they actually want the perpetrator arrested, but often they don't want to provide a statement. So there's lots and lots of reasons why it's difficult to prosecute. But actually, you know, we don't just stop at not prosecuting. When we've got those cases where victims of domestic abuse and sexual offences don't want that, we've got some really, really good commission services and support groups that we put them on to. And, you know, sometimes there are civil orders that we can apply for and we can impose that just gives them that kind of separation, a little bit more thinking time and a bit more safeguarding and protection. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, not an easy, easy subject, but something we do have lots of resources into. And specialist teams as well, you know, they're brilliant at what they do.
And one last thing, if I may. It's actually ward related. So Twyford and Colton Common, unfortunately, we have an electric bike shop in our village in Twyford. And we have had an enormous amount of break-ins of garages and sheds. And bikes seem to be the favourite thing at the moment that are being stolen. Perhaps you'd like to shed some light on that, excuse the term. But, you know, help is needed. And I think following on from councillor Godfrey's point about, you know, having a local policeman walking around and or driving around in a car, that there was that extra personnel, it's to be seeing an officer walking the beat.
Yeah.
It's a deterrent.
Yeah, yes and no. I think-
These break-ins happen during the day, believe it or not, at night. They're not at night, they're during the day.
Yeah, and some of them happen during the day, some of them, and I have to say, a lot of them happen at night time as well, because we've got ringing doorbells and, you know, other company supply doorbells as well, I guess, I must say. But we get footage and some are in the day, but actually a lot of them are in the night as well. And it's a really difficult one to investigate because even when we do get CCTV footage, one of the gifts of the pandemic is it's absolutely normal now to walk around with a face covering. So coupled with the normal sort of hoodie that we see, it's really, really difficult to, even if we get good CCTV, to identify who's responsible for it. We need to add a good arrest, actually, Kingsworthy. And the evidence of the intelligence that we've got are that they're, they're not local residents, they're organised teams. The ones that we've taken out have actually come from Southampton. They're taking really, really valuable road bikes, they're taking some now, some of the e-bikes, e-scooters, whatever they're called. So it's a really, really tough one for us. But that bit about that police officer on the street corner giving you reassurance, it kind of might make you feel a little bit better to see that police officer. But, you know, it really is, when you start looking at these crimes, even when we've got a series that's, that's really quite narrow. And, you know, if you're from Colton Common, you probably remember that probably about four years ago, we had dwelling burglaries that were happening during the day. And they were happening really frequently. They were happening in a really, really confined area. We threw the kitchen sink at that. You know, we had police officers on every street corners, we had plain clothes, we had, we didn't, we didn't find the individual. He was arrested at the scene of another crime and we were able to use some quite clever technology to put him towards a break-in in Colton Common and resolve those. But in terms of that sort of, you know, that sort of notion of police officer walking the beat, yes, it's nice to have. But, you know, I'm really, really more interested in what does the intelligence say, when's it happening and when do we need to do that? And you'll have heard already that I've talked about my proactive unit. They're in plain clothes all the time, so some of the stuff that they do you won't see. But they're still out there doing it. And, you know, they have got a really sort of doggy determination that if they've got an inclination of opportunity to arrest all these people, they're why out there and they're really enjoying it as well. The proactive team for Winchester, I think, is a massive, massive move forward for the district.
councillor Becker.
My question also related to the increase in the number of bikes being stolen. Is there anything that we can do as a council to help prevent those bike thefts from taking place? Because obviously we're trying to encourage people to cycle as much as possible rather than using the car. But if people feel that there is a chance that their bike is going to be stolen, that they're going to not bring it into town, they're going to drive. So what can we do to try and protect those bikes?
Well, actually, I've been in quite close contact with Martin Todd, actually. And he's been looking at some of the opportunities to improve cycle security. And so we're already having those discussions around where the hotspots are for cycle thefts. I've been sharing some of the analytical stuff with Martin and he's looking at that seriously to think about if we could do something, what would it be and where would it be? So 100% that's going to help. Some of it, you know, sadly, comes back to, you know, you should be able to leave your bike where you want to leave your bike, shouldn't you? You shouldn't have to kind of, you know, wrap it around in chains and carry all sorts of things. You should be able to do it. But the reality is that some of the crimes, you know, I wouldn't like to say crime of stupidity, but you know, some people leave really, really expensive bikes insecure or use locks that are just, you know, probably not worth using either. So there's two things. There are the organised teams that are equipped with the mobile sort of angle grinders that will probably be able to take anything that they want. But there's a large amount of the lower end ones that are, I think, avoidable and preventable as well. But, yeah, I do think that the conversations that Martin and I are having will help with the security issues, definitely with people cycling in the city.
So there's an education issue that we can tap into as well, the types of locks that they ought to be using.
Yeah, but do you know what?
I don't know if those D locks still gets thrown through and-
Yeah, but, you know, frustrating for me is that educational thing. We do so much, but still, just as simple as lock your car when you put it on your drive. I've lost count of how many letter drops we've done, how many social media posts we've done, you know, not just through my team but through the Community Safety Team. And people just don't lock their vehicles and they're surprised when they get broken into and their glove box has been rummaged through and their laptop's gone. And it's, that educational piece is really difficult.
Thank you. I just have two questions, if I may. And one of them is linking back to the mental health piece that councillor Power mentioned earlier. So I'm aware that often the police get called since the 111 service introduced the Mental Health Triage. One of the early questions they ask is, is this person a danger to themselves or others? So if they are suicidal, the police are automatically called because they're a danger to themselves. I just wondered where in the statistics that sort of thing would appear? Because I'm aware you also don't have to follow up, for example, if they're taken to hospital and then run away from hospital, they expect the police to go and knock on the door, go, please get back to the hospital, don't kill yourself. So I just wondered where in these- So I just wondered where in these stats that sort of thing would appear.
I don't know, actually, is the honest answer. I guess that some of our call management might keep some of those stats. But interestingly, some of what you said is right, but, but actually, we're more keen now to look at care plans of people that do phone and do say they're going to be, you know, harming themselves. And, and actually, there's a really kind of well thought out assessment that goes into it. And actually, some of those people that say those things, the right thing for us to do is not to send a police officer there, it's, the right thing to do is to send a care professional in an ambulance. Sometimes other people have, in that moment of crisis have wanted a police officer to come round and we're not equipped to kind of deal with that. So we're actually going to not as many of those incidents as we would ordinarily have been going to. And we're putting more emphasis on hospital staff to, to, to acknowledge some of the duty of care that they've got as well. So sometimes it's difficult, but, you know, what I don't want is to have a telephone call from a member of staff to say there's someone that's high risk, that's, you know, so that they're going to take their own life, they walked out of hospital half an hour ago down Romsey Road, just telling you about it. You know, more and more professional now, we're getting the hospital staff that will stay with their patients, follow them and be able to get them back to hospital. So even when they're called for police services, quite often, if we deem it appropriate to deploy, quite often they've stood us down and said, actually, you know, stay with this individual, they're back in hospital now, stand down, so.
That's brilliant, actually.
Yeah, it's brilliant, but you'd better join them, yeah.
Because previously it really did feel like, okay, now we're chuckling this out to you because we don't know what else to do. So that was how it felt. Okay. The other question I had is, I believe I'm right in thinking, and I don't know when this changed, but in a real emergency, closest police officer responds rather than necessarily the officers associated with that area? And when did that change? And have you seen that that's had an impact on the figures or the instances of catching criminals in the end?
Yeah, it's only anecdotal. Again, if I had figures, I'd tell you, I'm not going to make them up. But, yeah, for a long time, we pleased our own areas. So, you know, I was starting my policing career, well, my Hampshire policing career in Basenstoke. And, you know, it used to, our boundaries used to be a little bit like taking the shopping trolleys away from Tesco's, they stop if they go over a certain thing, don't they? And we wouldn't dream of kind of, unless it was a real emergency, we wouldn't dream of kind of patrolling those areas or it would just be for the unit to respond. And just doesn't make any, any operational or any business sense where you might have got a team of officers and police officers doing nothing at another level. So I think it changed when we went through the OCP programme, process. But now we can call it borderless policing, so we have Police Winchester, we move resources about readily. But although the responsive patrol units would normally go to those emergencies, whatever member of staff is, is there, the nearest person that's, that's to that job would be sent to that. So, yeah. And, 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 you know, of course it helps, gets us there quickly, doesn't it, and gets best evidence.
That's absolutely what I thought, because the boundaries, yeah. I mean, particularly where I am, I mean, they're on the border of Waterville and Deane Main, and they've got to come along with Bishop's Hawthwa, you've got Waterville Police Station just there, you know? So that, that borderless thing certainly would help in areas.
And it's a challenge as well, you know, Winchester is a great district to, to work, but actually it's a challenging district as well because it's right in the middle of lots of other different districts, isn't it? And, you know, we've got three investigation hubs, one in Portsmouth, one in Southampton, one in Basenstoke. Depending on where you are in Winchester, depends which hub you're going to. So if you get arrested in the city, you're going to go to Basenstoke. If you get arrested down in sort of Bishop's Wharf, depending on whereabouts in, in that patch, you could go to Portsmouth or you could go to Southampton. So for me to try and manage my daily business and try to lead those investigations, having to speak to three different investigation hubs and response hubs coming to different places. So, yeah, it's, it's a challenge, but.
Well, thank you ever so much again, as always, good time. Are there any further, any other last questions? I'd like to thank you both again for all of the hard work. And thank you and the officers, both inside the council and inside the police force for keeping us safe and engaging with our communities as well so freely. And, and thank you for the hard work. And hopefully we'll see you again next year. Thank you. Councillor Clell.
Certainly Chair, could I just say a few words? Thank you. I would just like to sum up, if I may, to say that I think there is always a need to strengthen our existing arrangements and develop opportunities for greater collaboration and to support local crime reduction initiatives and take a proactive stance against those who pose a threat to the feelings of safety and sense of community in our rural and urban areas across the district. But may I also say that having worked with the teams in my role as cabinet member for communities and welfare, and I think it's been shown tonight, that I really must congratulate John and all his team and Sandra and your team for your hard work towards creating a safer environment through engaging with the local community and actively responding to community issues. I've seen a lot in the past year, nearly a year, and I, thank you. And I think it's shown with the many answers to your questions this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And we will take a short break, so if I could ask you to be back at quarter past eight before we move on to the next agenda item.[1009.66]
Thank you everybody and welcome back. Just before we move on to the land transaction in respect of the River Park Leisure Centre site, I haven't summarised the actions that we had coming out of the back of the previous discussion. So the only one I had written down was that we were going to receive the comparison of 2021 figures with regard to fly tipping from Sandra Tullings and April Sosa's team. And councillor Horle, there was another one that I believe that you wanted to...
Chair, yes, and I just had a word with Sandra. I was going to ask whether we could see the delivery plan when it was made each year, when it started, rather than just being reported on. Sandra said that would be perfectly reasonable and they could circulate that to us. So my recommendation is that we do see the plan at the start of the next period and then we can look at their review in due course. Thank you Chair.
Certainly Chair, I'm sure Chris Bowen can see that that circulated, made available to all members. And I think there was one more Chair, if I may. I believe you were seeking clarification on the statistics related to the domestic abuse crimes.
And councillor Cook, you had another one that you suggested...
Well, it's the statistics regarding how many of those are actually arrested for serious crimes, violent offences and sexual offences. And how many of those are actually prosecuted and then successfully taken to conviction. And when we refer to some of the figures that we've been presented, could we look at maybe... We only have the year-on-year figures. I think as councillor Crass highlighted, could we have them over a longer period so we can have a comparison? That councillor Crass wishes to say something. Thank you Chair. Councillor Crass?
Thank you Chairs. Yes, it was the breakdown between current crime in this year versus crimes that happened historically and one reported in this year.
Sorry, so if it was a historic report, you wanted that separated out from current reports? I'm not su... Okay. I'm not sure that they'll have that because all reports are current reports, even if they're reporting a historic crime and I think that's a bit too much detail.
I think I would just agree Chair. I mean, I think the data comes from a number of different data sets and I'm not sure how much further manipulation of the data is possible. And I think you're asking if a crime originated in 20 but it didn't conclude to 21, that that was shown on a different data set than one that originated within a year. I think we can explore it with Sandra and the police commander as to what other data would be available, but I'm not sure whether that would...
I would like to say that Winchester's a safe place to come and visit and the data we've got doesn't say that.
I'd like to second that if I may. Thank you.
Okay, I absolutely take your points on that. Looking at the data, I feel reassured every year that Winchester is considerably safer than many other areas and that the team are very much on it and looking out for us at every turn. I don't think in today's society you can ever say anywhere it's completely safe, but I take your points on board.
Chair, thank you Chair.
So I shall put those points forward for their consideration for next year. Okay, so moving on to the land transaction in respect of the River Park Leisure Centre site and associated parking areas. It's on page forty-five to one hundred and fifty, but the initial report is forty-seven to seventy-two and the rest is the appendices. So councillor Lenny, come on to you for introduction please.
Thank you Chair. The paper in front of scrutiny today is a revised version of the land transaction paper agreed by Cabinet in November. The November decision was withdrawn in the light of the error in advertising the transaction and is brought back following careful consideration of the responses to the effort. The challenges faced by the council in bringing the site of the River Park Leisure Centre back into use have been laid out in previous papers. The covenants on the site, the ground conditions and the council's financial position limit feasible future uses. As key organisations and stakeholders in the city, this and the previous administration have regularly met representatives of both universities over the years to discuss their ambitions for their institutions and their place in the city. The University of Southampton is a globally top ranked business incubator. Share our goal to be carbon neutral by 2030 and have a commitment to civic responsibility. When they came to us last year with their proposal for the River Park site, it was clear that this was a very exciting proposition, fitting well with this council's aspirations for the district. The vision for Winchester 2030 supported the concept of a youth and culture corridor starting in the central Winchester regeneration area and finishing in the North Walls Park. Our area is already strong in the creative industries and this is an opportunity to extend that further into a creative cluster of national significance, attracting young talent, making it easier for local firms such as IBM to recruit and bringing new businesses into the district. The plan for the North Walls Park was agreed by the town forum in the autumn and we have ensured that the lease the area under consideration doesn't compromise public aspirations for the park or the elements they most value. The site plan in appendix A shows the boundary of the land that is proposed to be leased to the university. It includes the car park to the south of the Hyde Abbey Garden, the leisure centre site, the riverside indoor bowling club and the skate park. The only green space included is the narrow river frontages to the north and east of the site. In response to public concern and Mr Khan's petition to the council, we have agreed with the university a leaseback of the skateboard site which will ensure the continuation of the skate park under the council's management. All the sporting facilities elsewhere in the North Walls Park are unaffected. The continuation of free access to the skate park is preserved. The Bowls Club has its own long lease. One issue with the park that we have seen since the closure of the leisure centre is a lack of supervision and overlooking and increasing incidence of antisocial behaviour. The university proposal would bring increased activity to the town end of the park, day and night and that's recognised as being helpful by some of the park users. The timing of the site becoming available has been fortuitous as the University of Southampton reimagine and replan the Winchester School of Art campus to incorporate the police station site and consider which additional disciplines, commercial and research activities and facilities might be added to expand the existing creative offering. Negotiations taken place over many months to come to a position both sides find acceptable and we have published the heads of terms, although those are still to be updated, to be as open as possible with the public about the terms of the lease. The exempt appendix refers to the expected valuation that can be reasonably expected for the property. We are not gifting the site to the university and this is the price we would expect in an open sale, given the constraints on the site. Going to the open market would be unlikely to achieve a better result, but delay could lead to the opportunity for the city falling away. So I think this is a good opportunity for scrutiny to have a look at the deal under consideration. But before doing that, I will hand over to Mrs Aidy to cover the points that were raised earlier in public participation.
Thank you. Mrs Aidy?
Thank you very much. Could I start by introducing Mr Matt Hutchins, who's here to support us should you have any technical legal questions for us? Mr Jeff Coe is also online who's been supporting us in the commercial deal, so if we've got questions for Jeff, he is available. As councillor Lenny said, we're presenting this report to Cabinet on the ninth of March. A proposal relating to this site was first presented to Cabinet in November twenty-one. Following receipt of a pre-action protocol letter, we withdrew the decision and advertised the open space disposal and saw objections. The objections have been carefully considered and have resulted in changes to the decision coming back to Cabinet later this month. Chair, you asked me to respond to the public speaker's points, so referring to Rose Burns and the Friends of River Park. There were three key points on the first page which are underpinned throughout the objection document that were reiterated this evening. The first point is that the land is held on statutory trust. The second point is that this means the appropriation has to happen before the lease is granted. And the third is that the site should stay open to all members of the public for recreational purposes. We listened to the Friends of River Park and other objectors and this objection has influenced the current proposal. Recommendation four has been adjusted to require that appropriation takes place as a condition of the lease being granted, agreeing with the approach laid out by the Friends of River Park. As councillor Lenny said, the Bowls Club is secure. We've secured the future of the skate park via an agreed leaseback and recommendation two shows we have listened and adapted the proposal with those plans as well. Referring to the other speaker, Mr Martin Wilson, the report covers the issue of public consultation in the legal section of paragraph four point two-two, but it also makes the point of paragraph four-six that there'll be further opportunities for the public to put forward their views in the planning and the appropriation processes. I hope this answers the points raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Same way. Let me just refer to my notes I took. I think the primary thing that was brought up over both of them was the decision for the lack of consultation. And that really was the sort of key message. An awful lot of points were raised in there, but that seems to have come through strongly on both of them. I just wondered, given the strength of feeling in this, why the decision was taken not to consult? If we could just cover off that part please.
A considerable amount of consultation about the future of the city and linked areas has taken place over the past few years. From the top down, we've got the local plans, strategic issues and priorities, the Green Economic Development Strategy, the Vision for Winchester 2020 to 2030, the Winchester Movement Strategy, the Central Winchester Regeneration Development Proposals and the North Walls Plan. The proposal supports a considerable number of supported outcomes that have come out of those consultations and one of the messages we have received loud and clear is that many residents want us to listen to what they have already said and not keep asking them over and over again before doing anything at all. We do need to take advantage of opportunities that arise, not keep finding reasons for not taking decisions. To quote Boylan Summers, who's put together the Winchester vision, it became clear to us in almost every conversation that there was a sense of transition, transformation or moving forward being thwarted, that something was stopping the city from making changes, even small changes. This must change if the city is to thrive. So we've done a lot of consultation in recent years. This is a land transaction, well, leads the legal boss to deal with the requirements around that. But I think it's important that we don't lose opportunities because we take too long to talk about them.
Councillor Godfrey?
If I may, my point and... It still comes across in that response as if Cabinet knows best and that's much, which is much more prevalent of why they didn't ask the public about this specific issue. We're looking at a very valuable piece of land, very close to the centre of a large park with a population of our residents and clearly by their actions feel very strongly about the future of the site. And Mrs Aidy and the report have given some very good reasons why the views of the Friends of River Park and the objectors who raised in the meeting consultation since the public lectures went out shouldn't have to change their plans and that gives a workaround as to how the process can allow the Cabinet's proposal to go forward. But nowhere, this is where the question is, is where, apart from the skate park decision, is there any positive response to the two-hundred-and-something letters of objection, the two-thousand petition signatures and the other concerns raised? Where is there any positive in the response to those objections in tonight's paper?
Councillor Lenny?
Thank you. We've already been very clear about the change we've made to the skate park which satisfies everything that we were asked to do in that petition and I suggest you read it fully councillor Godfrey.
I will be patrolling please.
Can we keep this evening friendly and not have a residual council maintenance?
But the other thing the paper makes clear is the order of events, which is that considerable consultation will take place before a lease is signed and I don't know if Mrs Aidy, do you want to run through how that works?
Thank you. I'm gonna ask councillor Hutchins if...
We'll move down the table.
So just to be clear about this, the proposal or the main objection on behalf of the Friends of the River Park was there needs to be a decision to appropriate the land before the lease is granted to the university. An appropriation decision is a decision to change the use of the land in effect and that's a specific statutory procedure in section one-two-two of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. The deal that has been agreed is that the grant of the lease to the university is conditional, not only on planning permission being granted, but also on a further decision by the council to appropriate the land, in other words, to change the use of the land. Therefore, one of the points made in the report is that the objections that are made on the basis that the land should remain as public recreation space or be put to some other use, they're in a sense premature. The grant of the lease to the university enables them to bring forward their proposals in more detail and the council can then look at that further detail before deciding to change the use. So all these arguments are in a sense premature. The council will have to make the decision to weigh up the competing visions for this site, if there are competing viable visions, before the lease is granted. Of course, there'll also be the planning process and it'd be open to objectors to put forward alternative viable uses for the site as part of the planning process. So it is a mistake to think that this decision means, and I don't want to get in any way political, but tying it all up together, that Cabinet is making a final decision here as to how this land is going to be used. To the contrary, it is putting in place the first step of the process which is for the reasons set out in the report regarded as one that has a lot of potential.
Thank you for your response, Mr Hutchins. So just to summarise and clarify what we're saying, far from the initial statement that the reason for not consulting is that we've already consulted too much, actually there will be a latter point where that consultation will take place, is that what I'm hearing?
It's not technically speaking a public consultation, at least in the way that I understand this council understands that phrase. However, under section one-two-two, two A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, before the council makes the appropriation decision, there will have to be further advertisement inviting objections and those objections will have to be considered. So in other words, this proposal builds in a further opportunity for the public and stakeholders to put forward alternative visions for this site. Is that clear?
Sort of. Why, thank you for trying to clarify. Councillor Horle, I'm aware you had a question. Was it a question on the response to the public speakers or is it a question on the paper?
It relates to the comments made by councillor Lenny and Mrs Aidy so far and is probably at the heart of this. We understand consultation in its fullest sense. The supplementary planning document is referred to a lot as being a really amazing process that got us from a bad place to a positive place, everyone agreeing. It took a lot of time, a lot of involvement, hundreds of people and we took people on the journey and we talked to people constantly and our administration was in the Backsee Hall endlessly with residents discussing how we were progressing and developing that document. So that when it became a reality, there was overwhelming support and it's now a fundamental part of our planning policy. And so our learning, I think, from that is that consultation, as painful as it might be, was a really positive thing and actually allowed us to have a document that we could all... was a really positive thing and actually allowed us to have a document that we could all rally around. Because everyone now is saying the SPD is a foundation stone for Central Winchester. So what I don't really understand, no matter what the legality is, and I understand what the lawyers are saying, that we're not required to consult. And I'm on record as saying that I'm not against Southampton University. In fact, I think it's a really interesting option for the city. But it's the process. And what we're hearing tonight is that hundreds of people, and I was copied on many of the objections, not all of them, but hundreds of them. And I read them all. And people were concerned that they hadn't had the chance to have their say. So whatever we think we've done, we have taken everyone with us. So my question is, even though you don't have to do it, why don't we do it? Why don't we listen to all those people?
I might whistle.
Am I whistling? So my question to Mrs. Ade and the Cabinet is, actually be brave and let those people have the conversation with you. Because if you allow that, you'll take people with you on what could be a fantastic scheme for this city. And it's not required from a legal point of view, I understand that. You've got other processes in place and you can give us all of that, we understand it. We're smart enough. But I don't understand the absolute reluctance to address the requirements to have that conversation. We know from what we did on Central Winchester that it pays off, it's positive. And we could take everyone with us on a journey that could bring a really fantastic result. So that's my question to really the response we've had this evening. Why don't you do it? It's not harmful, it can only be good.
You say it's not harmful. However, we need to remember that the university may get cold feet and look elsewhere for options. They do have options in Southampton rather than investing tens of millions of pounds in Winchester. So, but what we're talking about doing this evening is something that is in line with the policies, which just like the SPD, I don't know why my microphone is going funny now as well, which just like the SPD have been extensively consulted on. And the next step, what we've talked about, there will be a planning application, which will go through the normal planning procedures, will go through appropriation, which will have its own requirements. There will be a period of engagement where this deal offers the university the opportunity to develop its proposals in conjunction with local people. And then at the end of that, through planning and appropriation, we can decide if that's the right thing. But what we can't do is expect the university to invest what would be hundreds of thousands of pounds in engagement and planning costs to, when they're in competition with, you know, who knows what. We've looked at the constraints on the site, we haven't really come up with practical propositions which will work for Winchester.
With respect councillor Lerni, they didn't suggest that there was a competition on this, they just suggested talking to residents, which is not investing hundreds of thousands of pounds in a competition.
Well, I think we have to be really careful here. Are we talking about, we need, any consultation we do does need to be genuine. And we need to know what the question is that we're asking and what we're going to do as a result of carrying out that consultation.
Absolutely agree on that point, but it wasn't spending hundreds of thousands of pounds on a competition. And just to pick up on a point that you've just relayed there, you replied saying that you can't expect them to spend this money on a competition. But you're now saying that they could spend this money, go through appropriation, go through planning, and then we'll decide if it's the right thing. So they could still potentially spend thousands and not get it. Is that what you've just said?
No, you've misconstrued what I said, it was the other way around. The decision is still in the council's court.
I think misconstrue was again offensive, it was misunderstood councillor Lerni, I was just trying to clarify, please be polite.
I apologize, I certainly don't believe the word misconstrues.
Right, so moving onwards, councillors around the table, do we support the speakers who are at us, Spurns at the back? Do you feel that the response to your questions has been responded to effectively, just briefly?
Sadly not, no. And it's not just appropriation that we in fact have been asking for or pointing the way towards. Once this piece of land is disposed of, which is in fact what is being talked about tonight, we lose the statutory protection of the Open Spaces Act. And it's almost too late by that stage. So we're suggesting that before any step is taken to dispose of this land at all, even if it's only under an agreement lease, the public should be consulted at this stage.
Mrs. Spurns, I thank you for your comments there. I think that's what councillor Lerni said. The consultation has to understand what the question would be and the purpose of that. And I'm not really hearing that, as in what question are we asking and for what purpose? I don't understand the legalities behind it, which is why I'm just coming back to you.
What we're asking is, because the decision itself has implications and it is an important decision, even if at the latest stage, the council decides to go ahead with the lease or whatever, it's this decision now, here and now, that is the important one. And we would like it to be halted, paused to the whole process, so that the public can be subconsulted at this stage before anything goes any further. So that's what we're asking.
councillor Weir, you had a comment.
Yes, I must admit, what's troubling me slightly here and maybe clarify is, you've asked, what is the question that's going to be asked? And I'm, we're struggling with understanding the context of this. Is how on earth can we ask the public, and we haven't quite defined yet what that public is, what they think about this? And I accept that councillor Hall has proposed something similar to the SPD. But in a sense, that is a sort of two-year process potentially, and we could find ourselves going around and around several. I think we've got a bit, you know, forces courses on this. And I'm struggling to understand how consulting the public on this disposal of this site is going to go somewhere.
Thank you councillor Weir. I'm just, I have to say in my gut, which is why we tried to do the call-in with some scrutiny, consultation is absolutely the right thing. I'm just struggling to understand, coming to councillor Lerni's point, what question we're asking, for what purpose? You know, absolutely consulting to me feels right. Just what, yeah, that, what question for what purpose? Is the bit, I mean, you know, we're just saying, we've got this, what do you think? In which case it's going to take a really long time to quantify and qualify. And there's going to be aunting different responses. What question, in your minds as Friends of River Park, would you expect to be asked and for what purpose?
We would expect to be asked what uses to which we would like this land to be put. And there are all sorts of uses, which have been put forward in 2015, for instance. There was a proposal, it was a business case and a feasibility study and also funding suggestions for a public performance space that was put forward by the ORGS. And unfortunately, it wasn't regarded or even responded to. The Lido, I appreciate that you had discussions about that. People are generally favorable about a Lido or open space. They haven't been given a chance to put forward their business case, their feasibility study, their funding proposals. And so that it might become a reality. None of that has been thought about or even put on the table. We haven't had, for instance, and I know this is something that is slightly controversial, but we haven't had any consultation with other stakeholders such as the university, which they didn't know about this until a telephone call went over after the presentation on the 1st of November, when it was first made public. That also there are other possibilities for this site. For instance, we've had a mugger put forward, a multi-use gym place, more facilities for teenagers to zip wire, for instance, that kind of thing. A bandstand, somebody has suggested. There are all sorts of things, a former garden, there are no flowers in the recreation ground. But all sorts of things, even if it's turned back into parkland, that could allow this to remain in public use for the benefit of the public, for recreational purposes, as was envisaged when the land was purchased back in 1902. And that is what the covenant is all about. It's still in place. And I don't think how on earth this council proposes to break that covenant because it's the benefit of it is enjoyed by the successors entitled to re-embarrass humans, of whom there must be hundreds of thousands. And they have to be given the opportunity to consent it. So that's another problem that you're going to punch down the line.
So coming back to the statements that have been made about Southampton University, and they will speak to residents and, you know, sort of bring them along with them. Some of the suggestions that Mrs. Spurns has just spoken of, is that the kind of things that the intent would be to consult with residents on? To speak to them as they go along through their design process?
No, I think we're quite clear here about what the university's broad plans are. We also need to remember that we did talk on the North Walls Park Plan last year. We are proposing considerable improvements to the facilities available in the park around the site. While we could look at all these things, but we have to remember that they all cost money and the council doesn't have very much at the moment. It will cost us a considerable sum, current estimate £2 million, to demolish the building just on its own. And I think we do have to consider that going forward. The prospect of a state-of-the-art public performance space is something that we are getting through this deal, assuming all of those hoops that we've described around planning and appropriation take place. But if you're asking for business plans and feasibility studies, you're back into the taking huge amounts of time, costing a considerable amount of money. And do we really expect to be in a position where we get a better proposition on the table?
councillor Conroyson?
Thank you, Chair. And please stop me if I'm saying my comments and question at the wrong point in this process. I really just want to check my understanding of the comments made by Mrs. Ade and Mr. Hutchins. If I've understood you correctly, what you're saying is that at points in the future, there will be opportunities to consult and there will ultimately be a decision made by the city council on an option to go forward. I still haven't understood it. So it seems to me, if I've understood the details in the paper correctly, we've roughly laid out a window of time of roughly five years for the University of Southampton to come back with a plan and so on. And it strikes me that if there's an opportunity to make a decision in future, if somebody else comes along with a fantastic vision, fantastic plan, a commitment to invest money, they could do so. So it would seem to me that the message I would give to any other competing stakeholder is, work out your plan and then enter into the process at a later point. So have I understood it correctly? In which case, where any decisions made by Cabinet next week are not irrevocable? They do, you know, they do.
Yeah, if I can come in, it's not that open, but I'll hand over to my colleagues. Because the point is, we are giving the university full opportunity to successfully develop its plans. It's not a case of it potentially being in competition with somebody else, you know, in a few years' time. It's, so, but as I say, I'll hand over to my colleagues for that.
We'll try and answer. Councillor Lerni is correct, the agreement for lease will hold the two parties together. So the future opportunities with the university engaging in the public before they put their plans together to make sure they have asked the public what they want and think, will then be brought forwards and at the point of appropriation and planning, sorry, I don't like the word planning and appropriation. The, I'm using the word consult very carefully because it's got a definition. So the public will be consulted on planning as normal and will seek their opinion on the appropriation in the same way, sorry, see their opinion on the appropriation, so be asked. So the point that we'll stop at that is if those plans don't work through. So if somebody's objection was because they had a better idea, they could still make that. But it wouldn't bring the better idea to the table until you decided to stop with the current process. Can I just check with my colleagues if that's all right, if I don't just, thank you.
So I think that, just to, for a moment, put it in context, there are two objectives here. One is to give sufficient encouragement to the university to spend a lot of time, effort and money on bringing forward a viable proposal that is likely to get planning permission. The other is that we have agreed that there will be an appropriation decision. And in law, that means that councillor Conroyson is correct that a group can come along and say, you should not make this appropriation decision because the best use for this site is for it to remain as public recreation. And you know what? Here's our worked-out plan. And that will be an objection, a sophisticated one, that the council will have to consider. So that I both put it in context.
If I can add to that, it's also the case that there are other sites in town which we expect to come forward for development in the future. So there is every opportunity for people who are interested in providing other facilities in the town, if they have a workable business plan, to look at those potential opportunities and think whether they might be taken up. I think, just as we've said around Central Winchester, there's danger in trying to squeeze everything on one side. I think there's a danger here in looking at this site as the only game in town.
I'm going to come to councillor Hall in a moment. I'm aware we have a lot of questions and we're probably overlapping with the report. But I think it's a really important conversation to have if everybody's happy to proceed with it at the moment. Yeah, okay. councillor Hall? I'm cognizant of council as regulator and council as developer and lines of distinction between those. Certainly even at senior officer level. And we're talking about consultations at planning stage and also other ideas coming forward from other interested parties to us as the seller of that land. I'm not clear on how we're managing that distinction here. It's not clear in the report, no one's referred to it. But there's emerging development and planning, as they can all coalesce. Just to be very clear on that distinction and where those lines are drawn in this process because they clearly would have some influence on decisions.
councillor Lerni? I think it's very straightforward. This is a land disposal. We're not procuring a partner to work with us on a development. This is about giving a partner to work with us on a development, this is about giving the university and the school of the art the opportunity to bring forward plans, but there is absolutely no conflict between our roles on this issue.
Chair, can I just ask, but in the same answer that both you councillor Learning and Mrs Aide are giving, you're talking, and maybe the lawyers can help, you're talking about consultation around the planning application, you're also saying someone could come forward with a new idea, as councillor Crumson has suggested, that would be to the seller, not to the councillors' planning authority. So how do we keep those two things completely separate? Because at the moment, they seem to be coalescing in that same decision. Because the seller of the land is still the council.
May I assist? Please, may I assist councillor Learning, just to give some more comfort to the committee? I'd just like to assure the committee, as they know, that the separation of duties at our director level is very clear, which of both of them is the responsible director for property matters, Dawn Aide is the lead for this project, and as members know, our monitoring officer, Mrs Kirkman, takes a specific view of planning activity which affects council land, so I'm very clear as your chief executive that the responsibility of our senior team is clearly differentiated across the different aspects of this project. Thank you.
Yeah, and I can also assure colleagues that those of us on the development side of things are very frequently tearing our hair out about our planning colleagues, while knowing that we can't influence them in the lease.
Councillor Horrall, please, just a moment. Oh, thank you. Councillor Goodfarren?
Thank you, I had that problem. If I may, to return to my understanding of the situation, is that we have not had the opportunity to discuss with the public what they would wish to see on that site, we are now at the point where if the Cabinet agree the recommendation of this paper next week, there will be no opportunity for an alternate proposal to come forward until the agreement with the university is rejected by Cabinet at a later stage. So from next week, the only possible option which could be considered is that of the University of Southampton's plans, unless further down the line Cabinet reject that the university's proposal, is that correct?
I referred to the answer I gave to councillor Crumson earlier, so clearly there's a planning process you're familiar with, and the planning committee is responsible for that, it's not a unique situation that the council, both back as landowner and as planning authority, that's a relatively common situation with local authorities. One of the arguments that objectors to a planning application can make is that there is an alternative, better use for this land, and therefore you as planning authority should refuse planning permission, that's one point. So that, it is open to objectors to make that point to the planning committee. The second point is that as part of the appropriation process, there will be further advertisements and objections will be invited, and clearly members of the public have had one go at that already, and they will be forewarned that if they wish, as has been described, to put forward a business case setting out a viable alternative use of this site, they may do so. So this proposed decision by Cabinet does not shut out those kinds of proposals from the public or other stakeholders.
Sorry, I appreciate that, I've just put my planning hat on, just briefly, and it's my understanding, you're saying that during planning we could refuse the application because somebody's come through and said, here's a better proposal for the site, but planning are bound to make decisions based on the planning application in front of them, and not take into consideration coulders, shoulders, they have to base their decisions solely on the application in front of them.
My understanding is that one can put forward an argument as an objector, that this is not, this application does not have planning merit because there is another better use of the land, to put it in that sense.
Yeah, that's not my understanding of how the whole planning process works. I mean, I could propose to build a house in my back garden, and somebody else say they'd prefer a Lido in my back garden, now I've got a really small back garden, so neither would be appropriate, but if I was applying for the application on my house, even though it might be more appropriate to put a Lido there, they couldn't refuse my house based on the fact they prefer a Lido?
Yeah, so even if we proceed on the basis that the ability to put forward that kind of argument is limited in a planning context, my understanding, there is some scope, but I take your point, it doesn't have to be the ideal use of the land in order to gain planning permission. The decision for the council in terms of appropriation is, in essence, which is the best use of this land in the public interest, so it is an entirely comparative exercise, and therefore in that context, it is entirely open to objectors to put forward an alternative use and say, no, you should not decide to appropriate the land for this use, because the best use is, and it might well be, the current use, and that would be an argument that could, and would be entirely appropriate to be put forward on behalf of objectors.
Councillor Cras?
Thank you Chair, if you don't mind, just share some of my thoughts and I can get some guidance as to where those are. So I think, for me, and I guess all of us, this is really hard, I think I became councillor because of what I saw across Winchester Town in particular, was just unplanned and unmanaged developments, I saw a fear of local plan being unviable, describing a numbers game that relied on infill, particularly in North Winchester, with developers buying up land, driving applications through an unparished ward, where residents had no ability to formulate objections that were, in my mind, considered or viable in terms of what the developers were pushing through. The first we heard about developers' chainsaws coming down, the next day you saw the orange notice go up, and it was developers that had no interest in Winchester, they could come in by land, build a home for footballers, then clear off, and that was it. So I intensely feel the lack of voice the residents have, and I know what people are saying in terms of the consultation. I'd like to think that what I, the feeling that I had, the experience I had was seen by many and felt by many, and that's where the vision of Winchester came from, and the consultation with others, with residents. And I feel that this is different to my experience in terms of, I feel that I've got an opportunity as a resident to engage in the planning process here. I kind of back myself when it comes to planning applications, if a resident comes to me with a planning application in my ward, I can, I know what the policy issues are, and I can raise legitimate objections, and they're often upheld, and it's gone to the inspectorate, and it's clearly been supported by the inspectorate, so I know a dodgy application, and I see one and I can put it apart. I think we've got some fantastic councillors in the ward, experienced professional people, we've got some lawyers, I think they can, you know, I think I'm back as to look at any application that comes through, and challenge any application, and then get a good application to come through, and/or, I'm not sure about the idea about putting alternatives as a reason to turn down an application, but if people want to come through with ideas about Lidos, or, you know, as my kids tell me, turn it into a 24-hour party place, you know, whatever they want to do with it, you know, it's an opportunity for us as town councillors to act, to support our residents through this process. So I feel, for me, it feels different to my experience before becoming a councillor, I think there's a planning process we can be part of, I think the vision for Winchester speaks to what people want, how Winchester, speaks to how they want to see it grow and develop, I think the university's opportunity is consistent with that completely, it talks to creative arts, it talks about development, it talks to education and innovation in education. So for me, I've got integrity in terms of the consistency with the vision and what people have expressed they're looking for, the detail exactly how that vision materialises is one for, I think, the planning process, and one for us as councillors to take responsibility for, and to work with residents, and residents have a voice, you know, the skate park petition has been a perfect example of resident voice, and they've made changes. So I'd like guidance as to where I might be missing, and missing something from what I've just exposed, I think.
Yeah, if I can answer that question?
I'm not sure there was a question. In terms of what you've missed, I don't think you've missed much councillor Cras, I think it's important to say that while the purpose for which the university want this land is clear, in terms of the plans, right now they don't exist, which I think is what people generally want to hear, if, you might be aware that somebody's going to build on the land next to you, but if you know that you can get involved...